Okay, well, it's 7:30 and time for the regular meeting of the Greensboro Plan Commission. Call it order at this time. Says here, "Pledgeability of Snow," there's a flag back there. We do that. The flag.
Pledge of the United States of America to your Republic for its stand, one nation, one God, indivisible,天地一物.
Come on Nancy, we call it that please.
Bruce?
Kevin?
Here.
Roy?
Yes.
Tom?
Here.
Lynn?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
John?
Here.
Okay, approval of minutes is left over business. I know that they were sent to you via email. There's a copy in front of you as well. Have you had a chance to review the minutes?
There was one correction because one was then, or sent by email on this one and it was correct last bell and the petition was last taken.
Very good. Yep, that would be better. So with that noted, official minutes are for you. Do you have any other questions or corrections, additions?
Make a motion and we accept the minutes as printed in front of us.
Give a second?
Second.
Ten seconds. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. There are basically three items of business tonight and something else that might be brought up by board members, commission members. First is the Family Dollar site plan. The way I want to do that, I expect there's people here, but miscommunication on that, so they'll be back. But in terms of site plans, what I propose that we do is that we have an explanation of them by the person making the petition. In this case, it'll be Gary at least giving us an overview so we have some sense of what's coming before us next month. And followed by our questions, commission member questions or clarifications, comments. And then I will open it up to the floor for the public's comment or question. And then it'll come back to us for consideration with regard to making decision about. Come back to us in that order even though we may not make a decision right because it does have to go before. The zoning appeals board for a variance with regard to change in the number of.
Change in the number. The ordinance requires for this type of use, one parking space for 200 gross square feet of floor area. That would require 44 spaces, this site plan. It just provides 33 spaces, which is a 33 percent reduction.
So reduction in parking. Yeah, so they're asking for a variance there to reduce the number of parking spaces. So with that in mind, that's why I wanted to have it presented tonight on before the plant and we can put some input into it. Then it'll go to zoning appeals and brought back to us for approval or not approval depending on, in part I guess, on what zoning appeals say and what other considerations we want to make. So with that, Gary, do you?
Basically, what they're proposing is a 67 by roughly 20-foot addition to the east side of the building. It's mostly break area and sales support area, not additional sales floor area. It's just break area for employees. It eliminates two existing parking places that are there and relocates some dumpster patches to the side. So it's really, it is a reduction of two, but by adding the square footage, per the ordinance, require additional parking. It's not necessarily additional sales floor area, so. The 33 percent as a major variance, most needs to come out of the BZA.
It's all along the, how long the alley?
The east side, yes, the alley side. There is enough room to put it there, but like I said.
With enough clearance for the alley and everything too?
And I did scan this.
Yeah, I did.
Whole package in PDF format, so hopefully you're able to open it and look at it. We have full size here. I apologize for getting to you a little late in order to scan something this big. Scanner in my office unfortunately had a problem. I was just able to plug in the last mission.
Okay, questions or clarifications, comments, or others regarding to their expansion? No? What, any concern about the square footage and the number of parking spaces?
Does that make the lechard anything with Goodyear Tower?
Goodyear Tower may be parking some things on Family Dollar's property. Doesn't mean that Family Dollar has to continue to let them do that.
I utilize the store quite often because it's near my house and I never, I've been there all times day and night and I've never seen the parking even be close to being full. You'll see maybe seven, eight cars, 10 at the absolute most. So just from that standpoint, that being break area, not additional sales space, I don't see that that's going to add any one coming into the store, so just.
You know, I've driven by there a number of times and I've never noticed it to be crowded or overly crowded or a problem with parking. But that's pretty sporadic when I've done it, so I couldn't.
A lot of people go there like me, you run in there to get detergent or something that you need, you know, some small household item like that. And you're in and out and gone. You don't, it's not a place, I don't think that a lot of people go and spend hours shopping at like they do at one.
But there's also no guarantee that that's going to always be the same use. But it has a Family Dollar and sitting here in City Hall, it has a desk that faces the window and does get a lot of foot traffic.
That's positive. Any other questions? Okay. Members of the public that would like to voice their thoughts about this proposal? Okay, well, it's a really relatively simple thing. They're not changing anything other than just adding on to the building. We're not looking at any kind of other kind of site changes or anything else.
It's hard surface for hard surface. It's already there. No utilities really added, parking fixtures or anything like that that's, they're asking for.
Just minor, in terms of the water drainage, is we're not looking at that much more that you can't.
It's already hard surface.
That's true.
Paved now, roof is same runoff coefficients. There's from that point from storm water increase, storm water, not anything.
Virtually.
Less than a half acre disturbance, so I really don't see anything like that. None of the utilities have raised any issues yet.
Okay, and they have looked at it?
They all have had copies for a month. Again, not had our plan review meeting on this yet, but we will in the coming month before they come make their full presentation. But of course they'll go to the BZA, which will be set up next month. And then depending on that, report of how that came out, Oliver Roy sits on BZA if he can attend that and then report back to this body on how that went.
Yes ma'am, you had.
I apologize, I'm just curious, since it was mentioned that, I'm sorry, circuit. I just was curious, since it was mentioned that it may not always be the same type of business that it is now. And just knowing from past research for parking specifications and size restrictions, if it was no longer Dollar General or Family Dollar, excuse me, if it were to be something else and they wanted to come in and that sold, if it would still be open to a majority of places rather than such a small, a very restricted, you know, type of property with taking away more parking space would be a main concern?
What, I think I understand your question, but I'm not sure I do. You're concerned that if something goes in there later on, will there be enough parking?
Yes. Because I think a lot of places have so many specifications on what they will allow, you know, for you to franchise and whatnot. And they have so many specifications to follow that.
I guess that would be, depending on what the zoning appeals board says and what we decide then also after that. If it, assuming it is approved, and that's what you're, that assumption is what you're making. I guess that'd be the problem with the person buying it and what, so it might restrict some of its use. It might, in terms of what you're asking for, if they have to have more parking spaces than what that space has, then they're going to have to find a creative way to address that or they're going to have to take that one off their list of possibilities and have something else go in there. I suppose that's something I can.
Typically retail and large spaces for thousands, one of your more intense parking requirements.
And that's what we have? Very good. All right, well, we will leave that lay for next meeting. Sign ordinance. We have, as of last month, we have asked you, our commission, to become a committee, basically, to work on this. And Gary has provided the draft of the proposal. Sean has provided us with some more material for consideration. And so what I'd like to do tonight is go through it in a step-by-step process. And first, Gary, have you present to the board this proposal. What are the significant salient changes or differences between present and your proposal? Down the broad strokes.
Okay.
For, and then allow us either ask questions to clarify that or just give us the, do you want to walk us through what, what you sent?
And Roy was on the original committee that proposed this as a draft to the past Plan Commission. So if I, this being pleased, correct me, but we were tasked with putting better definition to the ordinance. Creating less ambiguity so it was clear that it wasn't subject to interpretation. It was interpreted one way for one person, one way for another individual or entity that came to town. Basically, we tried to grandfather any sign that was out there, understanding that signs can be assets for businesses. Because if you have one that was bigger than what might be provided by the ordinance now, I've had clients in a past life buy those because that sign was bigger than they would be allowed to get on the site next door. So we tried to grandfather any existing sign that was there. We did not try to mess with heights or square footages. But what we did recognize is that the electronic message centers or reader boards that are becoming popular were not permitted by the ordinance. And so those, anybody that wanted to do those right now has to come to the BZA for approval. And we recognize that they're becoming more and more popular and we wanted to try to make them a permitted sign within this package.
Okay.
We kicked around brightness, intensity, how quick the changeover is, how quick the animation is. And I don't know that we really got to that point other than just saying we need to, and I think we put in just a brightness that was open to discussion amongst the Plan Commission. And we threw in a value that seemed pretty even and fair and potentially understanding that daytime illumination needs to be brighter than nighttime illumination. That's really the salient points of what we tried to address between existing and what you have as that draft.
Can you, and question, this document that you sent replaces everything that's in the ordinance now, is that right?
Yes.
Can you, in the ordinance, just give us an example of, and we'll go through all of them, but an example of where you changed the definition to make it better defined or less ambiguity?
I think it was on sign types, setbacks, heights.
We included things like animation because that wasn't even, definitions like that weren't even, aren't even included in the ordinance. Changing, you know, how they, I don't know what the term is, where it starts out, like grows out to a big, something like Napoleon State Bank does. We tried to include that in there. You know, it starts out, they have time and temperature and then it comes into a scene.
Fades in one way or another, yeah.
Yeah, and we tried to have it so that that, so that we recognized that those things needed to be added as definitions. Those things aren't even permitted under the existing ordinance.
Right, right.
Because we didn't know, when that ordinance was written, those, that technology didn't exist, so.
It's so, but in terms of the ambiguity of, so you're saying the ambiguity was with regard to people asking for variances and then getting it at the VZA or not getting it or in the discussions, that it was an ambiguity with regard to what was in this written word itself?
I think it was interpretation and I'm realized Sean is the one that came in and I had only been here maybe a month when Sean came in, but said he didn't know how to interpret the sign ordinance, that you might have had different interpretations at different times, right Sean?
There'd be a lot of gray areas.
So we tried to eliminate that gray area as a, as a committee.
Okay.
That was the idea. That was our original task, was really just to straighten up the language more than anything else. And in doing that, we realized that a lot of signs, a lot of stuff that they do today didn't even exist. If you read our old ordinance, you can't do it.
Yeah, or.
You have to go to the BZA, I mean, maybe you can do it, but, and then we also heard that a lot of people don't like going to the BZA because they're intimidated by that process. So we thought it would be nicer to have a situation where they didn't have to apply for a variance. It would just be cut, cut and dried when it came to the Plan Commission.
All right. After having read through some of this, begun to study it, I know it's a lot. Do you have Kevin or Tom, Blake, Tom, questions with Gary or Roy in terms of what's here that you want to ask? In terms of the proposal, I'll do one thing I'm trying to do. I'm not, I'm kind of skipping over all the definitions because they're very, very precise. And you get to that, I'm kind of looking at more the overall pieces of it. So in terms of, I have a question about, very technical question, what's a COA?
Certificate of Appropriateness within the historic district.
Okay. And the HPC in the store, permitted by the HPC.
Historic Preservation Commission. And that was taken right out of the historic Preservation Commission's documents, so it's, it may need some more clarity with the design ordinance itself.
Right, it will, yeah, it will. And then as we look at this, I'm just asking, I'm not making a judgment, I'm asking a question. The signs of historic downtown district, all that follow then in terms of allowable signs, location of size and so forth, and illumination, that's all specific to the historic district, I guess?
Yes, in that district.
And an interstate interchange sign, you know, we got permitted in, you know, B2, 3, 1, I-1 and I-2. Do we have B2s next to it? A, can it change?
Yes. B2 is all off Lincoln Street, so by the time you get up north Lincoln Street.
North Lincoln's not 3 then at the very end?
It's a 2.
It's a B, they'll be 2?
It's all B2.
Walmart and the other sides all B3, right? I would think so, if I don't know. Okay, all right. Before we get into the weeds of this, again, questions, commission members? Raise your hands, speak up. This is our conversation at this point, okay? Anything else Gary you want to point out?
No, I will point out that this is kind of a visioning and that you need to look at how you'd like town to develop. Even though it may not be there today, you do have redevelopment things. Work in communities where if you redevelop, the sign goes and everything goes and you abide by new standards. We tried not to do that for existing signs, but as the west side of town develops and you have different landscape setbacks and green areas and things that make different signs that might not be appropriate for our current business areas can look different. And you, just like you have downtown Historic Preservation District, you could, if you so chose, as part of the sign ordinance, create a special district for the west side of town and designate signs for.
Okay.
You think it would be appropriate in vision for that area?
Right.
I'm not suggesting you do that, but that is, is one way you could look at that. But the more districts you get.
More probably.
The more confusing the problem.
Okay, Sean? Would you please, if you would, give the, an overview of the salient points, what you're trying to across here? What, how you see this fitting into or changing or adding to what proposal is, so I, you know.
Okay, Sean Green, can I give input on the past two of the sign ordinances? What, Eric?
I'd really, I'd really like you to address this right now.
All right.
Because this is what, we're looking at the proposal and we're looking at your suggestions and additions. And I'd like to address this right now. It may come a point where we can have a broader discussion, but.
But the proposal that we put together, we spent a lot of time on it, preparing basically a new sign ordinance. That would be based on signing facts, signing knowledge, our expertise of working with design and charts that say a letter has to be a certain height at a certain distance away, very similar charts and a lot of the same charts that David Williamson showed you guys last month. And it's also a lot of charts that show a community that has good business success, not only for big box store business, but for small business. Really, my background is, we could be one of these big sign shops that do a lot of cookie cutter corporate signs, but that's not what we enjoy. I guess it'd be too easy. What we enjoy is working for the small business and we understand on how much they rely on this sign as being the least expensive form of advertisement. And it's hard for this sign, in a sign you work for a small business versus a large corporate business because they don't have the brand recognition. Or if you see an arching air, you know what that is, but if you see an M for Mac Daddy's Palace or something, you don't know what that is.
Right.
So they can get by with just logos. Small businesses has to have the words with that. It's also, it's friendly, easy to read, non-confusing, again, very helpful for small business. And it's fact-based and it's simple to relate with the city for safety of eligibility for reading signs since we separated everything within speed limit and traffic lanes on what would be allowed in square footage, et cetera. And it separates out the historical area as well because that is a slower traffic area and you get a little more walk by traffic. And it has more time to use some of those signs. Any questions?
So what you're suggesting is, again, I'm just asking questions to clarify, I'm not trying to make a judgment here now. You're suggesting that this replaces this completely? And where does it, in terms of, and I'm going to have to sit and think about that and compare that. In terms of, when we're talking about exempt signs, we hear we talk about prohibited locations or we're talking about location of them, terms of right of way and so forth. I know you've got a couple of things here in one page, but this completely makes care of everything here.
Throw the definitions on, it's done.
Throw the definitions on.
Yes. I'm not a lawyer, but again, I donated our time, effort and background to help where we can.
Yeah, well, that's fine. Again, I just want to make sure I know exactly what you're asking.
My opinion would be ready to roll with the definitions added to it.
John?
Yes?
I just got a couple of questions. On the page here, we got sign locations in terms of, you know, setbacks, closer than 10 feet and so forth. And then you got no signs will be permitted in the public right of way unless approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I, it may even be in here, I'm not, I guess my question is, why or where or when would we want? why or where or when would we want a sign in the right-of-way?
Not sure, but there is some unique areas, we had an example in Hurkville, Indiana, where it was a right-of-way that was no longer used because the road was widened and it was actually a road within a side road and the businesses set off the main road a lot further than they did years ago. And the city allowed them to do that. They did put a good stipulation in there that if the sign ever had to be moved, that that person would be liable for it and if the road widened, it's still the right-of-way and it's still the city's. So the individual had to agree that they may lose their sign or have to pay to move it.
And I could see giving flexibility, I mean, I, you know, unique things that come up and all. And then electronic messaging centers. And then it's under D, it says no EMC, which is Electronic Messaging Center, I think, permitted as adjacent to residential property. And then without proper approved screening of building fence and landscape. And I assume you're saying that's by the Plan Commission, approval by the Plan Commission or?
Our goal was to, to get rid of going to so many variances. So with nice detailed facts like this, it should eliminate a lot of extra time and effort and expense for you guys and the city and the individual business.
But, but who approves, is without approved screening, so who's approving the screening is what my question?
Whoever approves the permit. I don't know if you guys are going to have a sign placed or not, you can tell in town you haven't had one.
That we what?
You don't have somebody going around
No.
check, well, check us, that's not.
And then one question I hear was pole skirt, but you're saying adding on the definitions, that was my question, what? That was, but I think that's probably defined in these definitions. And very end directional signs, it says a pole cover is, a pole cover is allowed on directional signs 40 inches tall or smaller. And it may be in here too, but what's a pole cover?
Basically, instead of having, say you have a sign, two poles come up and it holds a sign and instead of looking so generic, you just cover
Okay.
Cover the poles with a piece of aluminum typically.
Kind of figured that might be what?
There's an example in there too, First Federal by Walmart has pole covers and they're nice little directional signs.
All right. Okay, members of the Plan Commission, you have questions, Sean? Questions?
Sean, did you address minimum height? Maybe I just missed it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, on the chart. Minimum height?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, I'm missing, no.
Only thing, as I pay more attention to signs, some areas you go, I was in Shelbyville the other day and they got some signs you can't see. They're out on the, out on 44 and they're like, they're right on the ground, they're flat on the ground and in that high traffic, you got like six lanes or whatever out there. I just, I don't think we ever addressed it either really.
Roy, it's not a bad idea to put in there.
You know, to get them up a little bit over at least car height, depending on the area is all I'm thinking.
That's why I was getting to the fact that, you know, where you do have green space setbacks and your parking lots aren't as close to the right-of-way, you're not going to have cars blocking them if
Right, right, out in the new, what we continue to call the new area, which out now is nothing, I mean, there's nothing there, but someday
There's nothing there, but we are pushing very hard with the redevelopment commission to
I mean, we'd like there to be, we'd all like there to be something there, I think all of us would. And, and out there, I think you can have a diff, because of the way that
Right.
We hope that would be designed, it would be a different type of sign. It's not really appropriate for like North Lincoln.
Well, where you don't have those green space setbacks and your signs have to sit within your paid areas.
Yeah.
Then you need that minimum height of seven feet.
Yeah, to get them up over, get them up over cars and pickup trucks and the big SUVs that you have today.
Yeah, the state makes me, that's where all their signs have to be minimum seven.
Because they're all, all with the right-of-way and that's where cars are.
Okay. All right, well, gentlemen, we have one in short chart form, basically. I'm going to sit down and relook at this with that in mind, a better, better way of comparing. This does talk about Sean?
Yes.
You are assuming that they would have to have, you know, permitted to put up signs and all that kind of thing. So we're going to need some language to talk about that kind of thing probably, I suppose. And a permit would be then for which type of signs and which signs are not permit required, I suppose. And in terms of, need to look at location prohibited signs. Now, that brings me to a question. You've got electronic messaging signs here and I know Roy and Gary both talked about including electronic signs. In, in the ordinance that proposed one here, we had flashing signs as being a prohibited sign. So what's the difference of a flashing sign with, as opposed to an electronic sign?
What we were trying to do away with was ones that brightly stunned you with their automatic bright lights, okay? Not, not what, I think, and I don't want to speak because I don't know the definitions like Sean does, but we had nothing wrong with the, what he calls electronic messaging centers, okay? That, that come on gradually. What we were trying to do was to stop things that had like a flashing bright red and white lights that you might confuse with some type of a police or emergency vehicle. We were trying to stay, and I'm not saying that we were good at doing the definitions. We were just coming up with a draft. It obviously would need to have been looked at by lawyers to, to know what definitions are appropriate and probably someone like Sean that knows, because I don't claim to be a sign expert, I just know what I like. I don't like things that confuse people to think it's an emergency.
I just, so that was what you're, you were trying to get at too, right Gary, I guess?
Yes.
What's the difference, Sean, if you can, if we can, you pick your brain here? What's the difference between a flashing sign and electronic messaging center? Is there a difference?
Yes, and I think it's good to have some verbiage in there about flashing. We went about it a little different way instead of just seeing flashing.
Where do you have it in yours?
We have it on the, the last page, up towards the top, number three.
Yeah. I think it's page two on
Two, let's see, number three, electronic message centers. Electronic message center signs shall be restricted to a maximum of 30 display changes per minute and the electronic message center does not exceed 75% of the primary sign. Basically saying you can't do a bunch of flashes. And you could actually add to this a little more with a gradient effect, you could use that terminology as well. That way you do not get those harsh streaks of lighting. The other thing with this language, it's similar to Seymour, Indiana, which they adopted similar language, language a couple of years ago. Because it took them a while to go through all this as well. And they had a lot of businesses show up over there and gave a lot of input and actually brought an expert in with the electronic message center and showed displays to everybody and showed the differences. And basically, they took it this far because they didn't want to have to redo it again. Because they're becoming so popular that even in towns that restrict, some towns are so strict they'll say every four seconds you can change or every 80 seconds. That's pretty strict and some of them out on the west coast may even get a little more strict than that. But what they're finding is they're running around knocking on doors all day long because people are still doing what they want.
And this 30 display changes per minute is two per, one per, two seconds or?
Two, yeah.
Okay.
We could add the word gradient effect, which would be good to add in there as well to back up the city from somebody wanting to push too many buttons because you will get them.
Okay. Another, Gary?
At Sean's request, we were sent information about a sign seminar in Carmel that I did attend. I have all of PowerPoint presentations and one of the demonstrations they did was how quickly signs change over from a two to a four and one eight. And I'd be happy to set that up for anybody that wants to see it. They put it on, every presentation on a flash drive, so they're quite large files and I can't really send out.
No, yeah.
But if, if anybody would like to see a demonstration of that, that I did see at the sign seminar and something different, I think I sent you some of the information that I got
Yeah.
But that one was, was too big to send out over email, so if anybody would like to see a demonstration of how quickly that changes over, I'd be happy to show it.
And then another one, the prohibited signs we had here was skylight, skyward lights. And again, Roy, you want to know, tell us, but that was, are you trying to get at there?
I don't remember, to be totally honest.
It was kind of the grand opening, big sky.
Yeah, that's where they, where they holographically image stuff in the air, that's what we were looking at. I remember now, thank you.
And question here now, this gets back to the electronic messaging thing. We've got two other prohibited signs that was in this original, or the proposal was signs with moving or movable parts and then animated signs. And I don't know what the distinction is there, maybe there, I'm going to try to grasp. What are you trying to get at there and how is that alike or different from electronic messaging and what you're talking about, Sean, so one at a time?
Well, what we were looking at in moving parts didn't have anything to do with like EMC. I'm, we were thinking of something that spun or, or physically moving.
The old Texaco signs that would spin and rotate 360 degrees or something like that, we really did not want.
Right.
Signs that did something similar.
We weren't talking about in moving, we didn't mean lighting moving, we meant actual physical parts of the sign.
Animated sign?
Again, I'm not sure what we were thinking of there.
Gain attention through animation is what it, signs that gain attention through animation.
I didn't, I didn't think we were looking for sign messages that moved.
And, and I don't mean like scrolling like they did at A&amp;W, we were thinking of other things now that you bring this up, like where the message moved on the sign. You know, like almost trying to put, remember the old bermish, I'm old, but remember old bermishay signs? They were each individually posted, but we didn't want to see anybody doing that in a, in a sign where it moved. Or instead of being different signs, it actually moved on the sign. Create something that would attract your attention for too long is what we were looking at.
And, and Sean, I'm asking the question, what, how is that? Is that, is that, how does that connect or not disconnect with electronic messaging?
The vertage may have came, and I'm not sure Gary, but it may have came from some older sign ordinances. It's like back in the 50s, you had a lot of spinning signs, a lot of flashing signs and you had like neon that would make somebody look like they were animated and moving. And it's, I think it's good to keep some similar language in and put it into a new ordinance, but I think you could reword it and just say no video and then you could use another line, so no spinning or moving parts to animate.
And, and again, that would be fine, we were just trying to get away, the idea was something that wouldn't attract people's attention too long. You know, we talked about that when he was here, did all the algebra on that. And we didn't want it to attract people longer than that, where you'd be distracted, where you'd go, oh my God, what's cracking?
Yeah, I got you. Okay. And we've got, we've got a section here on content. And I'm, I'm thinking that, I didn't see anything here as far as you had, of course, content, Sean, but I think you were probably thinking primarily just commercial. That's usually kosher, I guess is one way of putting it, usually acceptable, maybe I should say. We've got a couple of signs here with regard to ideas, with regard to obscenity and so forth. And then signs that would emulate emergency service kinds of things, so maybe that's not in conflict with anything that you're
I think it's good to add that one.
Yeah.
And just for a point of clarification, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but we thought of, in doing the new ordinance, that you would, when you came in for your site approval, you'd have, you'd do all this at once. You wouldn't, you wouldn't be coming back again. When you come in and get your approval, you're going to tell us what kind of sign you've got and where it's going to go. And we would look at that all at one time, not have people make, well, you come for this, now you got to come back and tell us where your sign is. We want to, I think Sean's in agreement with that.
And we wanted to make the application, like if Family Dollar came in and this was a new store, they would be required to submit their sign package of what they're going to put up on a building, what they're going to put for their site sign, where it was going to be located. And all that would be, again, with the screening, if it was an electronic message center, landscaping, all that would come to you in that package.
And would be more of a siteing site plan.
Right, right, right.
It would include landscaping and signage.
Right.
We would do all that at, at that time and then, then there wouldn't be any disagreement about how the process worked. I think everybody's in agreement that that's a good thing.
Then they get kicked over to VZA and that's why we know that they're popular and like them and
Kevin, anything you want to ask?
Well, what do you, give me an example of gradient effect.
You see the point, you state making use a lot?
Yeah.
Where they fade into one screen to the other, it's not a harsh flash.
Okay.
And again, you know, these, these message centers, the software that's always coming out with them and the graphics that they give with these, everything's going towards that. And I know some people don't want to hear it, but they're becoming more and more popular.
Going to the message piece?
More slowly moving items in the back. But if we use the word no video, that will help back up for the safety portion of it and back the city up from not having, you know, Vegas a look. But the gradient effect in so many frames per second is definitely good verbiage that's needed.
Tom, any other questions, Dave?
I want to, the definitions part on the draft, did you get a copy of the draft, Sean?
Not recently.
Okay. I was going to ask you, because that's, you know, you said, we have the definitions in front of what you had, that pretty well put the program or the plan together.
And the content, that's in the content.
Yeah, we've got, I've got a few more areas we need to go through, I don't know if we'll go through them all tonight, but we've got a few more things to go through too. Yeah, I think the definitions are something we do want to sit down with and, and spend time with because there are, there are a blue coup of them. We've got exempt here window signs, which again, I'm making a judgment about, just asking a question. So a window sign, for example, then, could have a a blasting effect or could have animation or could have could be scrolling or going faster or slower. or could have, could be scrolling or going faster or slower than what our outside signs would say, and that's what we're saying, is that what I'm hearing? Is that what this means? And that's, again, I'm not trying to control, I'm asking the question to be clear.
I mean, that's, I guess, open for consideration, I mean, I've found the very, to be very popular, the neon open that is, the O comes on, the V comes on, the E comes on, and then the swish goes around it, and they're in windows.
Right.
You've got V Market over here that's got a scrolling one on the bottom, doing their specialties.
Yeah.
You know? Should those be allowed in certain districts or other districts, or do, do they cause disruption? I mean...
I'm not going to, no, I, I hear you, and, and I'm, and I'm not, I'm not asking for decision, I'm just raising the question, and, because I'm not even thinking, we want to get on the inside, that's a little bit more of a free speech kind of thing, but I just want to make sure we know what we're talking about here. Address is face sign. I'm not sure what that means, and I suppose we can come back to that one, scoreboards and political signs, flags and pennants, so. Public safety messages, and I exempt...